Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call of members.
Dr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Hoff.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood. Mrs. Erwin Adams. Mr. Johnston. Mr. Francis. Mrs. McGinnis. Mr. Cook.
I'd like to announce that we had an executive session May the eighth.
We're going to have an executive session.
Which is today.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. So we're going to an executive session for right now, with a brief recess. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. I wouldn't announce now that we did have an executive session for personnel issues.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. President, do you want to make note that Mrs. McGinnis arrived, I think after the roll call she arrived, so we'll ask the board secretary to make note that she's present.
Yes, could we make note that Mrs. McGinnis is present? Okay, we have a special presentation on budget and finance.
Good evening and thank you. Nick has the PowerPoint, he'll be driving it there, but you have a copy on your, on your desk, on your table in front of you, and then there's a supplemental document that is, provides a lot more detail to support the information we're providing tonight. We'll touch on some of it. We always provide this, this budget book to you. We'll have a formal, final one in June. Right now, it's very preliminary. We don't have the, the county certified numbers yet. That will come out. We expect it the first of June. As you all know, we don't have, the state budget hasn't passed yet. We will have a discussion on adding some positions tonight to enhance safety and security and the physical well-being of our students. So those, those pieces are included, but this is just preliminary. So we will be reviewing the preliminary budget that will be on Monday's agenda to be voted on. It is not final. It is not a tax increase. It is not, it, it's not final. It's just what's going to be on display for the public to review for thirty days before you make the final decision, the final vote in, at the June meeting for the final budget. So those are the, the upcoming, the fifth, we'll have another cow, we'll have, hopefully have some firmer numbers from the county and the state, and we will, we will provide any updates to tonight's information, then the final budget will, vote will be on June nineteenth. So tonight, we're going to discuss some proposed changes to district personnel that will include greeters at all the elementaries and learning express, bringing LPNs back into the district, hoping to be able to secure staff. Where, there's a supply and demand, as you know, across the nation where there's a shortage of labor. So we've, we're proposing some ideas to try to attract staffing. Then we'll talk about some major expenditure changes, projected changes in revenue. Nick, can you change, thank you, give you an update on teacher retirements, and then we can have, discuss anything that, that you want more detail on. So the board has already approved changes to the school psych, for school psychologist. On the March twentieth meeting, you approved adding another school psychologist, but you may recall that you had already approved another school psychologist position over a year ago that we've been unable to fill. So we have two positions that will help serve the needs of our students. In, at the May meeting next week, we will be proposing to add two autistic support teachers as well as a speech therapist, and this is in response to the needs and class sizes with the, with the autistic support and the speech needs. And rather than outsourcing, we would, it's more cost-effective to bring it in-house. And then you had already approved a grant writer that hopefully we will hire soon and that individual, yes, sir? Correct, thank you. One of them was an ES position that was approved in August of 2022 that was not included in last year's budget, so, but it is included in this year's budget. The grant writer individual, the sooner we can get that person hired and onboard, the sooner we can be seeking competitive grants to start filling in the gaps for some of these increased security needs, some of the mental health needs, and bring in some additional revenue to help once the federal money is, runs out next year. The grant writer was approved February twenty first. The next slide is, just shows you some of the costs of these positions to help quantify it. So the school psychologists, it was approved to bump them from sixty-eight to seventy-eight. We weren't able to find anyone who would be interested at sixty-eight, and we're hoping that increasing the pay and having the, the benefits will attract a psychologist or two. So those, each one is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars before reimbursement from PISers. The special ed instructor positions are the two positions, one's ES, one is, is autistic support and a speech therapist are shown on this, this slide. Their benefits, that net is two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The grant writer fiscal assistant with benefits is approximately eighty-three thousand dollars, and some of this will be recouped, is expected to be recouped with some of the grants that are written. So in summary, some of the personnel changes that we have talked about, and now we've quantified, is increasing the security greeters to have one in every elementary building and learning express, which would be nine. Increasing their rate of pay starting at fourteen dollars or fifteen dollars once they are at two thirty-five trained. Bringing the LPN nurses who are currently with ESS back to Altoona and offering them single individual health, healthcare with the preferred, preferred health network, our middle community partners plan. Bumping their, their hourly rate up to twenty-four dollars an hour to try to be competitive as, because there's a nursing shortage as well. Then, as you know, SEAs have been a revolving door. We have not been fully staffed for years with SEAs, and we're trying to be creative, and Dr. Prietal had suggested that if we offer any SEA, there are approximately twenty-five to thirty who qualify as full-time, offer them single preferred healthcare network coverage, and hope that that will help attract and keep some of our SEAs. So we have continuity of care for the students. It's really, it's, as you know, it's not good for them to have, have someone start and then decide it's, they got benefits somewhere else, or they leave after a month and the, the students don't have that continuation of, of, of care. So also offering it to our certified occupational therapist assistants there. We have four of them, and they are hard to find and keep. And then the security greeters, we had already discussed, but the current greeters would also be offered the single healthcare coverage if they work full-time hours. So the security greeters, this is our estimated cost for the nine new positions, and in addition to offering the benefits to the existing greeters, so it's around three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And bringing the LPNs back in, there are eleven positions that ESS has opened. They have not been able to fill them all. We, over the We, over the past couple of years, the actual expense has only been for around seven positions, and that's what I was budgeting based on what, what we had spent the year before. So the budget was lower than, than what we're going to budget now, because we're hoping that by offering benefits and bringing them back to the district, that we'll be able to secure all eleven positions, and that, that total cost would be four hundred and three thousand dollars. And addition, the cost of the additional benefits, putting them on our healthcare at the premium rate for twenty-five, well, for thirty SEAs would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and for four COTAs, it would be twenty-one. Now, please keep in mind, this estimate is based on what the premium costs, what our premium is, we use for budgeting, but our actual cost is whatever their claims are. If they have no claims, if, if none of them have any claims, we won't have any cost. If a couple of them have claims, we have to pay exactly what the claim is after they're deductible. So this is a rather nebulous number, and we are talking about in, adding sixty-one, potentially sixty-one individuals to our healthcare between the SEAs, the COTAs, the, the LPNs and the greeters. So I have added some additional money in our contingency in case healthcare goes over what we've budgeted, just to be safe. In our expenditure changes, this, this is a summary of all the positions that were described in the previous slides summarized here. The security greeters and the added healthcare would be an additional three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for their salary and benefits, and then the other expenditures, the sixty-five thousand is their weapons, their, their uniforms, their, their vests, their trainings, they would have to go to, to specified training, and for eleven, that was Bill Peffer's estimated expense for that. That would not be an annual cost. Once they had their, their weapons in there and their training, that would just be a one-time cost. The school psychologist total with benefits is a hundred and twenty-eight. The instructional special education, including the speech, is two twenty-three. Grant writer, the LPNs net, what we were, had been paying to ESS and the SEA and Cota benefits, and the total salary and benefits and other expenditures are a little over one point four million. Now, if, if we go to the next slide, an act one increase to the index would generate approximately one point one million dollars, which would cover the majority of those, those positions that would be designed to increase the, again, the security, the, the health, the mental health of our students and the security of our staff as well. And then Sue actually put this together, thank you very much, and she's gonna take the next piece.
So just to step through on the act one index, you may hear other published information about other school districts within our area and how they're raising or not raising taxes to the index. So I thought it was important to note the base index in the state of Pennsylvania right now is four point one percent. The state allows any district that has a, a market value to personal income ratio greater than point four to increase that base index. So Altoona has a, a market value to personal income ratio of point six nine five nine. That's what allows us to raise, potentially raise our taxes to an index of five point nine percent. So if you hear any other publications, that's the difference there in our base index. We are proposing, and included in our budget, if you go back one, Nick, please, thank you, proposing in our budget that we do raise to the index, this is the effect that it would have on the median household. So the median household value is published by the state or by the county on the first of June every year, and that's what Camilla alluded to earlier, that we don't have the final numbers from the county. But is, if we raise to the index, the average taxpayer is going to see a change in their tax payment, or the median taxpayers of forty dollars and forty-one cents. So that's, so on the next slide, it will tell you the properties with an assessed value below twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, if they have the homestead exclusion, will see no real estate taxes at all. So all of their taxes, so the, the lowest assessed values within the Altoona area school district will not see any tax, real estate taxes. Last year, our homestead exclusion was a hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for each property that filed for and was granted the homestead exclusion. That was a little over half of our residential properties. So we had twelve thousand, six hundred and thirteen properties that qualified for the home study exclusion last year. So I calculated based on all of those numbers, a straight average change to residential taxpayer by raising our taxes to the index would be thirty-three dollars and nine cents. As for a residential taxpayer, our commercial taxpayers would see a higher number than that, about an, an average, a straight average of a hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So the, the next slides are just overviews of what we're budgeting in local revenues, state revenues, federal revenues, in, in your extra packet on pages two, three, and four, you would see the detail that makes up on page two, that's the detail of, of our local revenues, and you can see it year over year, and last year's budget to this year's budget. We have included in these, in these numbers for tonight, in this proposed budget, in, increasing to the index. We also included an estimated earned income tax increase of around half a million. Trying to bring out some highlights, investment income is, is up significantly because the interest rates are higher. In the state revenue, we, we have recognized some, some good increases from the state in our basic ed subsidy. You may recall that they gave us level up funding to try to bring, we were one of the hundred school districts that had, was not receiving our fair share, and so level up is now part of our basic, our base subsidy, which is a very, very good thing. So that's reflected in addition to an increase in social security reimbursement. Social security reimbursement is included also in that first basic ed. They've, they've put them in the same function. Increased federal revenue, because this year I budgeted one point five million dollars for the windows at, I think it's McCall of Heights and maybe the Gap. So that's in the budget this year, Penlink, this year that I didn't, I only had two hundred thousand last year. So those are some of the highlights of the increases in the revenue. And on the next, the next slide, the summary of expenditures by function. Instructional expenditures went up significantly, partially due to this year I am budgeting our healthcare consistent with where it was last year. We had taken an aggressive stance last year that with, with PHS and with reference-based pricing for our out-of-network, that we were hoping that our healthcare would actually decrease. And that's, I aggressively, as I said, aggressively budgeted it that way last year, and we had some major claims, and the prescription expenses, the, the drugs, the cost of the drugs are increasing exponentially, and it's actually, our, our costs are fairly level, but we're, all the things we're doing are basically containing it. So I've reflected this year a very realistic expectation of what our healthcare will be and what our cyber expenses will be, and that's reflected in higher instruction costs for both special ed and regular ed for our outsourced cyber. We are bringing some students back, but there are still a lot, there's still a lot out there. So I've given a, a very realistic budget for cyber and healthcare costs, and that's reflected in this, in this budget. In addition, you'll see in that four thousand line, the, the one point five million, that's the windows. In the five thousand at the bottom, that one point six includes a contingency if healthcare really explodes. Let's, I would hope that it wouldn't, but this would help cover us and where we would not go over budget if we needed to use that. This next one is the expenditures by object, which is by grouping, and again, all of those, all of these are detailed more in your supplementary packet that you can, if you want us to go over it page by page as we have in the past, at the June meeting, we can do that, but I thought it might be, it might be better for you. If you have it now and you have a chance to look through it and you develop questions, you can either email me, call me, or have them ready for June, and we can give you more, more details and more information. But on the summary of expenditure by object, the salaries are increasing partly because of contractual obligations, partly because of the, the increased staffing we're, we're proposing, and estimating that we are actually going to be able to fill all our positions. The benefits that minute, million dollars, about a million dollar increase is reflecting the, the increase in healthcare that I budgeted this year over last year. The other big one is in the four hundreds. That difference between two point three and three point six includes, that's where the windows are. The other purchase services, the five hundreds, that change from twelve eight to fourteen reflects the increase, budgeted increase in the cyber expenditures. Supplies are not that much more than the other objects are basically principal and interest as well as that contingency. And our revenue changes, summary or a brief overview showing that where we are increasing in basic ed subsidy, which is, which is great, as well as the social security reimbursement. And as we have more new teachers and more new staff, our social security and retirement reimbursement increases. Staff who were hired prior to nineteen ninety-five, we get a fifty percent reimbursement. Staff based on our market value aid ratio and another, one other variable mean that the new hires are getting, we are reimbursed closer to seventy percent. So the blend right now is between sixty-five and sixty-seven percent reimbursement. So the social security and, and retirement, our, our reimbursement is going up, but that social security reimbursement would be part of that three point nine. They did increase our special ed subsidy by four hundred and fifteen thousand. Unfortunately, I, our needs and our, our autistic support and emotional support costs are far exceeding that, but we're working on a way to make sure that we, we get every, every dollar we can and out of the special ed subsidy. And then the change in the federal funding for SER, that one point four is primarily the, the window project of one point five, and then we included the, the act one increase for going to the index, which would be one point one million. So that's why there's a, that's what makes up the big jump between budgeted revenue in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. And then here's a summary of, of revenues and expenditures, and we are, we are showing a balanced budget thanks, thanks to SER funds at this point, and maintaining fund balance from twenty-one, twenty-two to this year and next year, it would still be at almost twenty-six million. Then, just a summary, I don't have a page on it, but we included it in the, in the agenda that, to give you an update on teacher retirements, we did end up with, with twenty teachers who submitted their retirement by the four one deadline, and that realizes about six hundred thousand dollars in nutritional savings, which is reflected in these numbers as well. Part of the, the negotiation to have them turn in their letter by, by April first is that we pay out on their sick days, sick and personal days, ninety dollars a day, up from what was seventy-five dollars a day. But this way, we know that we have twenty teachers. They're not waiting until July when it's so hard to get replacements. But the, the cost of, of those severances is close to three hundred thousand dollars that will be recognized in this year. And then I have budgeted about two hundred thousand dollars for next year for severance, if we have more teachers retire next year. So we've run through a, a lot of areas very quickly, touching on some things that we've talked about from other meetings, and I'm hoping that this is kind of built on what we've done in our, in our finance committee, committee of the whole pieces since the fall, and that it's not quite so much of trying to drink from a fire hydrant that it makes a little more sense, that it's a little more in context, but we're ready for questions.
Okay, just, just real quick, on your function four thousand, the, you know, that's basically, you said we're for the windows and different things at the schools?
Correct.
Okay, now, when we put security in the elementary, I've been to several elementaries, and, and I think there, there's gonna be, have to be some physical plant improvement to some of those, some of those buildings. You know, you know, what we went through a, a few weeks ago, you know, kind of brought us that, you know, what's, what's happening in this world and what effect it had on our students, teachers, and even us with the phone calls we got, that we have to be, you know, have these elementary guards armed and have a, have a safe entry for all the schools, and it's gonna cost money. And, and I realize that the, the tax increase may not cover it all, but and I think I would be remiss if I didn't say, you, you know, you have your proposed tax increase. And I realize that our cost be seventy cent, seventy percent, I guess, is, is for staff. Cause there any where you could cut anything? You know, with, with the rest, we could, we could cut something that we could say that we, you know, we went and, and we've looked to trim some fat from somewhere. I know there's not much fat in this budget, but there's gotta be somewhere with that much money, you know, what is it, forty, fifty million dollars that we, we should be able to find something. And I know it's hard for, for people to, you know, when they pay their taxes, you know, retired people, and it's tough, and, and we'd like to, if we could just try to save, you know, find some cuts and not go to max on, on, on the tax increase. That's
But the budget is this tight. Everything that happens that is adverse, that the impact is full felt, because there's nothing to beat it up, there's nothing to push it. But when we use security, we're like, the thing I But when we use security, like the thing I that's four positions we haven't been able to fill consistently.
Okay, the thing is, is that I, I realize that, but you know, even if a tax increase is just forty-eight dollars per household, forty-eight, forty-eight a year rather, you know, people have to look at their, their budget, you know, the family budget, you know, and, and you know, if family budgets are changed every year. So yeah, just, you know, we make cuts in our family budget. And I'm sure we could find cuts in this, in this budget. I'm not saying there should be massive cuts. I realize we need nurses. I realize we have, we, we have the, the security issue, but there should be able to find some cuts with the, with the sixty or seventy million dollars left over outside of your, your, your total expenses for salary and healthcare.
Your fungible monies in this budget are less than five million dollars, meaning that those are funds where we could, we could somewhat say are discretionary. The, the reality is gas, electric are locked in, transportation is locked in. Any of our, we have hard costs when you're talking about contractual services and, and the delivery of, of, of major elements of what we do. I mean, we can cut the building budgets. I mean, I, I cut the building budget by another ten percent. But understand that that means I've cut the building budgets, I've already cut them by twenty-five percent in my tenure. They'll now be thirty-five percent. But the reality is that this doesn't generate that much. And when you're talking about positions, we've already leaned out positions. And I go back to a statement I made several times in the past, it's, you can only cut it once. And what we've reached is the point where we have been so fiscally conservative that we can't hold on S C A's because we don't have enough perks to be competitive. We're having issues with, with, with nurses, LPNs for the exact same reason. And now we're, you know, facing the fact that there's no way around it. We have to beef up security. I, I hate to be, I hate to be the bringer of bad news, but unless we're going to cut programs. I mean, there are things, you know, the, the board has never wanted to cut meal money. Now, meal money savings is what sixty thousand dollars? It's marginal. But the reality is we're that lean. And I hear it all the time. Well, we grasp these cut, things need most, this needs done. Well, all those things cost money. And we can cut them. But that cut's going to be imaginary because as soon as push comes to shove, but people don't want to start, it's going to go right back in the budget. I mean, there just isn't that much in the budget that can just be, okay, this is discretionary. Because the majority of what we have are either contractual services, utilities, set expenditures plus salaries and bennies, which are dictated through the contracts we vote on. You know, every so many years and having sat through the negotiations twice for the teachers, twice they're asking, the, the reality is the market rate for these increases that we're delivering is not exorbitant. It's pretty much where everyone else is. So short of raising class sizes, we have a, we've hit it.
But we, we have always looked for anything we can do and the refunding of the debt in twenty-one actually reduced our debt service, the interest on our debt service by about half a million dollars this year. We are always looking to see if there are creative ways to if, if there are any opportunities for refinancing, we're always out.
And, and we are looking at refinancing because we're, we have, we have another conference call with John McShane tomorrow. And it's a it's the way the law works and the way the structure is. And with the situation with, with banking as it is right now, we may have an opportunity to, to buy back our bonds at a discount and then reissue them as municipals, which will save us money also with the interest rate. The reality is, do we have, and he, he's going to discuss that with the board. Is it, is he say the fifteenth? Or is he coming in June? In June, you're going to discuss that option with the board because it will save, it will save some money. It's not going to save hundreds of thousands. It may save a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, depending on how much we can, we can run through that opportunity. But likewise, if we have, if we were to put that opportunity out there and we have no takers, then we, we have no savings either. It's, again, that's, that's how much we've pared this down.
I, I know we spent the entire year at our committee of the whole meetings looking at data. I think we saw that the Eltuna School District compared to other districts in the state is one of the lower taxing school districts, has one of the lower per pupil expenditure costs, has just everything we looked at, there was no exorbitant numbers showing for the school district. And I, I think it's operating in a rather lean and mean situation. And we looked tonight at adding security greeters. We looked at adding two school psychologists. We looked at ways perhaps to keep S C A's on board by providing some benefits and making them, a number of them into full-time positions. We looked at LPNs and changing those from a contractual service to in-house employees, adding benefits to try to attract more. The school psychologists, the LPNs, the S C A's are not frivolous. They're very vital to the operation. The idea of adding benefits to keep them on board will save us in the long run, if, if that works. And I saw the total cost for that was about one point three million. The total revenue by taxing to the index would be one point one million. So we're about two hundred thousand short. But it almost pays for those additional positions and benefits we're looking at putting in this budget. So we're, we're saying we'd want to add, but we want to pay as we go and not make it into a big deficit. So the, this board and every school district in the state of Pennsylvania has a tough choice. The COVID monies go away in what, one more year? Okay. And that fiscal cliff is going to be pretty steep unless you do something to fill in the hole. And I, I think this board and every other board has a choice. Do we do our job and know that taxpayers are not going to like it? I was here during the time for, I think it was twenty-eight years, we didn't raise taxes. And there were years after that where I see taxes weren't raised. And maybe if we had raised them a little bit, we could have filled that gap along the way. But now we, we, we gotta do something to not run into a financial crisis.
I agree, but the thing is, is that you, I, I can't give a carte blanche, say, okay, raise, raise the millions to the max without trying to find some sort of saving somewhere. You know, last year I mentioned about, I had some suggestions for saving some money. Some were looked into and some were mandated. So if there's suggestions for possibly saving money in, in the district, would I present that to Mr. Printel or can I present that to the board president or the finance committee?
I am, you can present it to all three.
Okay, just suggestions.
I, I just, I want to say this because I can we could cut building budgets. Okay, but understand that we've already cut all the building budgets. And oh, by the way, they hadn't seen an increase for ten or more years prior to us cutting them. You, you have, when you look at inflation over the last fifteen years and you realize that your building budget had not been increased, but it's been cut twenty-five percent. Our busing costs, I mean, we have manipulated busing in every way, shape or form. And the problem is we, we manipulate it, we save it, we, we eliminate runs, we, we make those efficiencies. And then a couple of issues come up and then we have to add a couple of runs and half of our efficiencies go by the wayside. It's a vicious cycle. We are going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to fi- find the efficiencies, but to budget them would be deceiving to the board. Cause the reality is we're not filling forty S C A positions that were budgeted. Because we just can't find the people. We're not filling for L P N positions just because we can't find the people. Security is a major priority. I agree with the board a hundred percent. And we, and we literally, we literally need to look very seriously at putting an armed guard in every building. The reality is, you know, we talked about that in September and I was basically given a carte blanche to go out and hire, I could hire. We've run an ad continually. Until we raise the rate with which we are reimbursing our, our security people and we make the rate more, just more conducive. We're not going to be able to fill the positions. I understand a hundred percent. If I had to run this, this budget as dry as I could, I'd be sitting there saying, we can do this, we can do that. There are no textbooks in the budget. We're paying for textbooks with COVID money. And one thing that's nice about that is we're probably going to have a couple of years where we're not going to need to buy textbooks after COVID's over. At the same time, we're going to need that savings to help balance the budget. I respect what everybody has asked me to do. Tax increases are not popular. No one wants to pay more in taxes. The realities are, in order for us to continue to deliver services at the level with which is expected and demanded, whether it's mandated by federal, state, or it's expected by local citizens, the budget's going to have to increase. And the taxes are going to have to go up to cover it. It's, um, I mean, I can tell you, I'm going to cut bus trips down. Or I'm going to run less cruisers. But the reality is then when push comes to shove and it's like, well, why are our kids on the bus with, on a, on a, on a yellow school bus for two hours instead of in a cruiser? Then we're going to go back to the cruisers and the, and the savings will have existed only on paper. Cause it's unrealistic to put a kid on a school bus for two hours, no restroom. We all know that. But you get where I'm going with this. There are realities that are beyond my control. And I've tried to explain this since I walked in the door. You can only cut it once. And you, and trying to cut your way to prosperity is fallacy. Somebody gets a raise. They have earned income tax of one percent, one and a half percent, right? We automatically get an increase. The state ups the B E F, you get an increase. Real estate taxes stay flat. Flat. Unless the board takes an action to increase them. The housing value may go up by seventy, eighty thousand dollars. But our taxes remain flat unless the board votes to increase it. We have a very robust housing market right now. I mean, amazingly, the demand for houses. I know for a fact, properties listed last Thursday received multiple viewings, multiple offerings, bids. And are sold today at four thirty in the afternoon over the requested selling price. The reality is there's no way around it. If we're going to make things work and continue to make things work in the manner that the board would like to continue, we are going to have to raise taxes and, and cutting the budget is not going to be, is not going to be a practical solution. I mean, I could do ceremonious cuts. But I can't guarantee they're going to happen.
You know, we need some big industry back here. You know, I've been here for forty-five years. We lost a lot of work around here. You know, it's, it's, we need to get some leaders to step up and make an inviting to come here.
Well, you, you've also got to, you got to realize, you know, Amazon's opening up.
That's one.
And that's, that's going to be, you know, anywhere between two and three hundred employees and
That's going to help.
It's going to help.
Need some more help.
Right. The, the, the reality is we need more, we need more employees right now than, than, than we have people.
I agree.
And that's not going to help us when it comes to filling those positions. Cause I'm really concerned that when Amazon starts hiring drivers, that we're going to have our bus drivers in a very, very nice position for them and not a nice fiscal position for us.
So even with we raised the taxes, but we had these employees, the structural deficit still remains, right? Five, five million, right?
And when we have firmer numbers, we are going to address that in, at the June Cal.
But it's going to be
Yes, we
It's not magically going to disappear. And that's going to be the consistent deficit moving forward. So you could do the math, you could see the fund, the, the balance. I mean, we're four or five years away maybe from being in trouble. And that, that's why this year I asked, we, we went and met with our state legislators because I haven't been on the board as long as some of these guys, but what you begin to realize is these unfunded mandates are, 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 are really the source of this deficit. There's other things, but I mean, if, if that was alone cleaned up, we would be, we could have a balanced budget. If the special education funding was up to par, if the cyber charter stuff was worked out, we would be good. And I, I think the public needs to be aware of that. I tell everybody I talk to, you know, it's a year and a half on here that we're fighting an uphill battle because you could see what we're able to generate locally. It's not much. When you look at the overall budget, so I wanted to talk to our local state legislators and let them know, I, I feel it's incumbent upon them to support some changes in, in the way these things are done. I think we need to be very open about what's it look like if we become a distressed school district? Anybody could Google it. You could go out and search the stories and see the state comes in and local board loses control over what gets cut first. You know, so I would encourage people to start educating themselves because that day is coming unless something drastically changes here. So I think we need to get ahead of it and be consistent in our messaging. And I think all school districts should to put the pressure on the state to make some changes. So that's all I wanted to say.
So going back to our, our February board meeting where we, where we discussed cuts. And that's when we were having our departmental budget meetings and reducing the high school budget by And reducing the high school budget by ten percent would generate forty five thousand dollars. Dr. P did have Andy cut his budget. Junior high budget by ten percent is thirty three thousand dollars. We did reduce the junior high supplies budget by, by ten percent this year. Twenty-three, for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, we talked about real, relocating staff to G A C T C and saving um, that rent. Now, there would be, we would have to purchase a location or find an alternate location. We have not, we haven't solidified that yet.
We will no longer need to rent the facility from St. Mary's parking. So we have a way to park up at G A C T C, and we will save that bill.
Then we had also discussed some potential reductions that we did not, we don't recommend. Um, the Altoona Public Library support of two hundred thousand dollars. Mansion Park limits on hours would save fifty thousand dollars, eliminating meal money fifty-five. Reducing instructional programs, depending on what the program is, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Principal sharing buildings. Again, these are things we've done that did save money. Years ago, but it, it caused a lot of other challenges and there was fallout. Um, principal sharing buildings, nurses split between buildings, um, closing the swimming pool, eliminating transportation. Um, those can save large dollars, but it's not, we don't recommend it. It's not in the best interests of, of, of our, of our students and our programs that attract the students. So um, we did, we did cut um, some of the, some of the um, supply budgets um, this year. And then Sue had a point.
Yeah, and it's not like we're just. We're not being diligent in what we're spending. So earlier this year, we were able to lock in both our natural gas rates and our electric rates. So they are locked in for the next three years, so we won't incur the market increases. So we did that in the last two years and compared to what the market was doing, we can save considerable money on our utility bills. In addition to that, we are bidding most every purchase that's between, that's over eight. Eight hundred, eight thousand dollars. So we bought new calculators to replace those that were outdated here at the high school. We bid that using an online bidding system. And we were able to get calculators for thirteen dollars apiece when the market value was sixteen. So we are aggressively finding ways to save money. Um, not necessarily specifically budget cuts, but we're actively bidding and seeking cost-saving measures.
Yeah, yeah. All I'm saying is, I agree that we need a tax increase. I understand that. All I'm saying is, is that how can you uh give carte blanche without trying to look for some more cuts? That's all. It's all I'm asking. I don't need pout up upon about what we're doing. But all I'm saying is, is it certainly logical to try to find it? I know, I realize you have to have tax increases and and I'm for tax increases. Can we lessen the bite a little? That's all I'm asking.
All right. I hear you. We do. We used to contract things up prior to my getting here. We used to contract out certain repairs and modifications. Now it's all in-house. We literally run our own. Our own landscaping with the junior high. I don't know what the bill would have been, but we did it all in-house. Um. We, we have a contractor who basically rents, does all our drywall work, does all our doorwork, all of our lockwork, all of our, all of our inside construction. And we're maximizing these people out. I mean, literally. The crew goes from one job to another job to another job to another job. How far are they projected out? How many months? Probably two, two and a half years. So those savings are immense. We talked about special ed, what we're doing with special ed. We have, how many people, how many kids are, are, are currently outsourced? About, about thirty? A little over thirty. When I came, it was, it was more like fifty plus. Well. Understand. That generates a two million dollar savings at fifty thousand dollars a student, which is actually a conservative number for what it costs us to send a kid to NOLA. Or to America. But the reality is. We have to spend money to save money. How many kids are in our, our cyber, Brad? Five hundred and seventy-five students are in cyber. If they were an outside cyber, that's a seven million dollar bill. Our cyber, it's a million five.
So I have a quick question. It might be dumb, but who evaluates like all the efficiencies within the school building? So let me, for example, I mean, I always ask about event workers. But another one would be like, the fitness room is open every day for the kids. Like, do we keep track of how many kids are using the fitness room? And if we could just do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, instead of five days a week? Or the, those types of things, or the clubs within the schools. I don't want to cut programming. But if we have a club that is only, you know, that isn't meeting or regularly. Or, you know, the, the advisor's not holding their weight, like, who's examining all those efficiencies? Because they're all little things, but they add up.
The reality is.
The reality is like with clubs, a lot of our clubs' sponsors aren't paid anything to, to run the club. Um. We literally have. People who are not paid to run the clubs that they run.
Not, not all. I mean, there's, there's quite a few that are academic in or recreational type clubs that are run by volunteer sponsors. Um, we do have, as outlined in the contract, we do have clubs that are with paid sponsorships. They're categorized based on the amount of hours. Like, we've done a study, number of hours, number of students, and what that would look like. Um, we've talked before, you know, one of the things that we're doing currently is we're asking those advisors. To give us a description of what the activities are, the amount of times that they meet monthly, and for the amount of time and the average number of students. So that we can look at whether there's equity or inequity and how they're being compensated.
We are, absolutely. I mean, those are the types of things, like, I, I know it's dumb. And I talk about those event workers all the time, but like, we literally have, like, all these people standing around that we, we don't need that many people. So I know that's like fifty dollars a game, but how many games do we have? You know, I mean, that we could cut to event workers and, you know, I mean, I, it's just small little things. But I, I, I'm just looking for any efficiencies, I guess.
Soccer and basketball have both been given directives there to cut at least one, possibly two people for, for the upcoming school year. Um, the one you had mentioned about the after, so some of those programs are funded by like foundation grants. The after-school wait program and the after-school homework help program are both grant-funded for the foundation, so they're not out of.
Those are things I don't know. Like, I'm just, I just was thinking off the cuff.
Yeah, but no, those are things, and obviously, if, if we don't have numbers to sustain having multiple staff members there. One of the things we get into, so you have multiple staff members to make sure that you don't have issues with safety, security, those kind of things. And we may only have four kids one day, might have twenty the next day. And we, and we do need to look at being flexible and adjusting how we staff those events. Um, which we tried to, we're trying a hundred percent not to waste money um, in any way, shape or form. But it's one of those things, there are times when you have to have a certain number of, of staff members, regardless of, of whether or not you have the participation by students. Um, do we, do you want to talk about that other thing or no? I mean, I, I think that's.
Brad, Brad had suggested we talk about if we go community eligibility provision, that's going to save us some dramatic. Our, it's going to save our families money.
Essentially, so if, if we get community eligibility and all of our students receive free and reduce our free, free lunch and breakfast. I mean, I know what I pay for my kids to get lunch every day, so I'm sure that is a direct savings. Of, of literally hundreds of dollars um, for, for most of our families. That, you know, if you look at a tax increase, that will more than offset, you know, a tax increase. You know, if you're putting a hundred dollars in your kid's lunch account every month, or multiple kids' lunch accounts, and you can save that over a nine-month period, that's a nine hundred dollar direct savings. To a lot of our families if we're able to get the, the, the direct certification, which we're trying very, very hardly to do. So we're, we're trying to find ways that we might be able to save you a lot on this end. It may, you know, understanding that, okay, if there's a tax increase, that's out-of-pocket money that you made on a budget for. So how can we, how can we relieve some of that? And part of that relief would be in ways like, you don't have to pay for lunch anymore. You know, we, we can, we can get your lunch money cut to zero. You know, you can't get a healthy lunch every day without having to pay out-of-pocket for that. So that's one of the things that we're trying to do that would impact. Obviously, those that aren't eligible for free, free and reduce more than those that currently are, but it would certify all of our students for free and reduce lunch and breakfast.
And I understand the thing with event workers. One of the things that drives event workers, it drives me bonkers because like, why do we have so many people? But the reality is, some of that stuff has actually been prescribed to us due to, uh, it's been mandated by accounting practices. And the fact that we have to be in a situation where we can survive the audit and we cannot, and, and. I don't know if anybody remembers it, but prior to my getting here, I believe, um. Whatever the, what do they call that? Attorney General DePasse School? Who um, decided to, to make this big, this big case over our transportation bills. And the reality is. You know, some of these things that we don't do what we're supposed to do, next thing you know, we have an issue. And then we're on the front page of the paper because somebody have scouted, have scouted with the game mind. Um, and, and that's all those positions while. Quite frankly, they seem like a bunch of spare bodies. At a game, they're being dictated by the accounting practices and, and what we have to do to main, maintain our auditability. And whether we like it or not, that's just the reality. Now, we are cutting down security when we don't need it. We are cutting down personnel when we don't need them. But at the same time, some of these things. It's just beyond our control. And the expectations of what we have to do to make it happen.
Uh, some schools have uh naming facilities. Baseball field, maybe it's something uh, we could look into naming a baseball field, softball field. I Am Field over here, maybe it's too many one stuff.
I was just, I was just looking at that, Ron. It's just, I just searched that, yeah, high schools of, high schools are doing that, selling the naming rights to their athletic field. Uh, like, it could be. Acme Field at Mansion Park.
I like it, yeah.
Um, it could be.
Still keep that Mansion Park, but have that.
They did, uh, the baseball field in. The Penn State uses, Lebran, uh, Meadowfield, Lebrano Park or something like that.
Perfect, perfect.
It's, it's a thought.
We do have a naming rights policy, you know, we could review that on a, have a policy committee meeting coming up here shortly. Uh, if it's something to look into, uh, let's say the I Am Field over there, maybe someone wants their name on that. A room. Uh, we have a theater. Maybe somebody wants to have a name on that, on, on the theater. There's always somebody out there, it's like. Leopold family paid a lot of money to name the tennis courts that are gone now. They paid a lot of money for that naming rights and they're going. So just, if you're going to do naming rights, do it for a five or ten-year period, right? Not forever.
Okay, all the items on the agenda. Anybody have anything else? None? Meeting adjourned.